Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the mayor's briefing to order for January 3, 2023 to order. Also, I'd like to say with city councilors on Zoom, we have Council Lopez, and I believe that's it at the moment. Seeing that, I will present the Honorable Mayor John View for his comments.
Thank you, President Laflamme. I have eight orders, mayor's orders, that I'd like to ask for the consideration of the city council tonight, but first and foremost, I would like to wish everyone a happy, healthy New Year. I can't believe it's 2023, and very excited about 2023 and what it will bring. I'll start with Mayor's Order 1, order that the city council accept the fiscal year 2023 firefighter safety equipment grant in the amount of $19,308.95 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and the Department of Fire Services to the Chickapi Fire Department. Said amount is accepted in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A. Orders 1 and 2 go together. I know that Fire Chief Stamorsky is here. We've received a grant, and first, I want to thank the Fire Department for their efforts in obtaining this grant, and it's going to allow us the opportunity to purchase, I believe, the Jaws of Life, a piece of equipment. So, the first order is to accept the grant, and the second order is to expend the funds. So, Chief Stamorsky, anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd just like to add that the original intent of the grant was to be able to purchase three pieces of equipment to complete a set of jaws, and that they come spreaders, cutters, and there's also a hydraulic ram that comes with the set. I'm not certain why, but they only granted us a portion of that, and that's the reason that we're in front of you today, is to both set the funds in place to purchase them and also to move some salary funds from unused salaries to purchase the two pieces. We're going to do without the ram for now. We can live without that one, and this is going to earmark for Engine 7, which responds to 391 often.
So, thank you. Any questions about Mayor's Order 1, and I'll shortly read Mayor's Order 2. Sure, George Balic here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, Chief. How many Jaws of Life do we have currently in the city of Chickapi?
So, currently, we have Station 1 has a set. Station 4 has an older, smaller, less powerful set. Station 5 and Station 3.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, and again, thank you for your consideration for Mayor's Order 1. Mayor's Order 2 is the appropriation of $19,308.95 to the following-named account, fire special account for the purchase of equipment from the available funds and the stabilization fund. And like I had mentioned, this is the complement to Mayor's Order 1. This is where we'll actually spend the funds and purchase the equipment. Chief, anything you'd like to add? I think you've already explained it.
Yeah, nothing further on that.
Thank you. Thank you for your consideration for Mayor's Order 2. Mayor's Order 3, order that the sum of $16,500 be hereby appropriated to the following-named account, fire special account for the purchase of, for the purchase of ambulances, said amount to be taken in the available funds, and the fire salary account for second-year firefighter. And as you can see from the background information, this ambulance is ordered over a year ago, and it appears that, let's see, the $16,000, chief, is for the training bags, AEDs, and other equipment for the ambulance?
That's correct. So typically, in the past, we would purchase an ambulance, and we would trade one in at the same time, and consistently have four ambulances, two frontline and two backup. So, when we originally ordered this ambulance, we had not had the impact ambulance in place yet. Our intent now is to keep five ambulances, because we have the impact shift running every single day, seven days a week. So typically, we would swap all this expensive equipment out of the one that we were trading in. In this case, we need to purchase these items to have it fully stocked.
And, yeah, sure, President Laflamme.
Yeah, so, Chief, that means we're going to have four now?
Five.
Five. So, this will actually help with what we're requesting for backup in emergencies with the concerns of the residents.
Yeah, it's going to, well, it's going to help in numerous, for numerous reasons. They run hard. There, there's a lot of mileage on them real quickly, and often, something is broken, whether it's a piece of computer technology, brakes, whatever. So, we'll have the three on the road constantly, and the two backups, and we're actively pursuing some other things right now that we're not prepared to share yet, but in the future, we'll be bringing that in front of you.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sheriff Counselor Jerry Roy.
Yes, Chief, this $16,000, that's for upgraded equipment that goes into this new ambulance?
Yeah, correct. A lot of the items are disposable items that we can move over, but these are, like the AED, for example, they're, as you can see, that's $3,600 alone. Stairchair that has the tracks on it, and it's safer for everybody's back and so forth. The active shooter gear, so that that thing is ready to go at all times. So, it adds up fast.
Another question is that, you say we have five ambulances?
The new one is due to be in within a couple of weeks. That's what this equipment is earmarked for. At that time, we'll have five, because we're going to repaint. We're not trading anything this time. We're going to keep five.
And how many are actually in service at any given time?
So, right, right now, four are available to be used, but on a daily basis, three are in service.
Three?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
If I may, Jerry, two run 24/7, and one is that extra ambulance that hits the peak hours, runs a peak shift every day.
Do we have enough EMTs to cover all these ambulances?
The, the impact ambulance that the mayor's referring to, that's the one that is run with overtime funds with our current employees.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Sure. George Balic here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, Chief. With the supply chain issues, are we going to be able to get this equipment pretty, pretty soon, or do we have to wait for a while?
Yeah, we planned ahead as far as this goes, and started getting, you know, contacting all the various vendors, and they're pretty confident they'll have it in time.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary Beth Piniakastela.
Thanks, thanks, Mayor. Chief, is this the largest amount, the five ambulances, in the history of Chickapi? Because that's great. That's great news. Thank you so much for five ambulances. Excuse me.
Yes, at this point, it is. But bear in mind, only three of them are continually running on a daily basis. But yeah, this is the largest supply of ambulances we've, we've had to this point.
Oh, that's great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or, or conversation about Mayor's Order 3? Thank you for your consideration.
Before you go into Mayor's 4, I'd like to, Council Tilton is on Zoom also. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Chief Stamorsky, for being here.
You're welcome.
Be it ordered that the city, Mayor's Order 4, be it ordered that the city council, be ordered by the city council and approved by the mayor that, under the authority granted to them by Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022, the Chickapi retirement system increases the cost of living, the COLA, for fiscal year 2023 to 5% on the base amount specified pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 32, Section 103. Said increase would take effect on July 1 of 2022. As you see from the background information, I know that Tim O'Shea is here representing the retirement board in our retirement system, but with the inflation, shrinkflation, and all of the above, there, the governor has signed into law in, on November 16 of 2022, again, the Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022, which would allow the city of Chickapi, which I support, to increase the COLA from 3% to 5%. That's the cost of living adjustment. Tim, anything you'd like to add?
No, I mean, we gave a 3%, because that's how we can give July 1, and then the legislature passed this, and would give an additional 2%. And again, it's only up to $16,000. And we must remember, Social Security, they, they receive 8.7. So, we're still, so they're still behind, but it's, it'll help a little. And this is a one-time event. You know, next year, unless there's legislation, again, it'll be 3%, again, on the, you know, up to 3% on the first $16,000.
Sure, Gary LeBree.
Yes, thank you. On the base amount, wasn't there some talk that they were going to increase the base amount?
Well, it was increased from 15 to 16 last year.
That's it?
Yeah. So.
I knew there was some talk about it.
The city of Chickapi approved that as well, Gary.
Yeah, yeah. You, you all approved it. Thank you.
Sure, Mary Beth.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to thank you for your efforts. I enjoyed the meeting that we had a couple of weeks ago, and informing me about the city's retirement system.
Oh, no problem.
This is wonderful news. I'm happy that we're above that 3% and going to 5%. And I'm glad that the mayor and the city has supported the governor's initiative to increase the retirement for this year for, to 5%. Inflation is a problem. The cost of energy is rising, and I'm glad that people on fixed income can have a, well, a raise that's more in line with today's economy. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Also on is Shane Brooks is on Zoom.
Thank you for your consideration, and thank you, Tim, for being here. Mayor's Order 5, order that the city council accept the in-kind donation of a Christmas tree with a value of $399 from Chickapi's BJ's Wholesale Club to the city of Chickapi. Donation is accepted in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half. As you can see from the background information, and from that beautiful tree that's on display right here in the auditorium, BJ's graciously has donated that tree, and we wanted to acknowledge and recognize that donation as in-kind. Any questions about the donation of the tree? Thank you for your consideration. Mayor's Order 6 is order that the city council accept the in-kind donation of a Christmas tree with a value of $249 from the Chickapi Home Depot to the city of Chickapi. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half. And as you can see from the background information, as part of our tree lighting ceremony event, we did receive an in-kind donation of a tree from the Home Depot and valued at $249. So, again, we're thankful for those generous donations. They really do make our holiday events into something special, and all those who participated in our tree lighting and those ceremonies, thank you. Any questions about the two-tree donations? We'll move on to Mayor's Order 7, which is a new appointment. I hereby notify that I have this day appointed Nathan Morrow to the planning board of the city of Chickapi to serve in such position for the term expiring the third day of January 2028. And I know that Nathan is here. I know many of you know him. He's now taking a position working with MIMA. He has an extensive background in planning as a former assistant planner here for us, and has also worked in the mayor's office in the past, and is deeply rooted in Chickapi, and I think he'd be a great addition to the planning board. Nathan, if you just want to say hello, I think pretty sure everyone knows you. I didn't ask him to come tonight, because he has a new appointment, and I'm sure you're going to send him to subcommittee, but Nathan, anything you'd like to share?
Just Happy New Year, everybody, and nice to see you all. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Nathan. Sure. Frank, President Laflamme.
Yeah, thank you. I think Nate's going to do a great job. He knows the system already, and the way the system runs. He was involved in a lot of our stuff. So, Nate, I'm glad to see you come back and help us in Chickapi. Thank you.
Thank you. Joel McCall.
I think Nate will also do a great job, but I'm a little concerned about adding more Yankee fans to our staff. So, we'll keep an open mind. Thank you.
That changes everything. So, George Balic here.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I'm glad to see Nate come back. He's well experienced. He's well qualified, and it's, it's going to be a plus-plus for, and win for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments about the new appointment? Again, thank you for your consideration. Move on to Mayor's Order 8. I hereby notify you that this day I appointed Jay Paul to the planning board to serve the position expiring on January 3 of 2028. He is a new appointment, and you can see from his background information that he certainly would be an asset to the planning board. He's currently a chief engineer working for Nextar Media Group, and he has a lot of experience in, in working with communications, and he's lived in Chickapi for most of his life, and is very anxious to get involved. And I think he'll be a great addition to our planning board. So, thank you for your consideration of Jay Paul. And that concludes the mayor's orders. I do have a couple of quick things that I would like to share with the council, if that's okay with you, Mr. President.
Yeah, you're all set. Thank you.
Thank you. So, first and foremost, I'll take a minute to introduce. I know that President Franklin Flamm was intimately involved in the selection process for Facilities Director, and we, I can proudly say that we've chosen David Rice. David is here today. Dave, if you'd like to stand up or maybe even say hello, please feel free. Dave comes to us from a nonprofit called Viability out of Springfield, where they're headquartered. He's got 15 years of experience working there with being in charge of over 40 properties in five states. So, we're really excited to have Dave on board as our Facilities Director, and I wanted to introduce him to the council, and also to the constituents and residents and other viewing audience here who are participating in the meeting. David, you have the floor for a moment, if you'd like. I put you on the spot.
Yeah, you did. Well, I'm excited to be part of the city and hopefully make the Facilities Department better and do what I can to bring the team together and make better processes. And I didn't have a speech, so this is all I could come up with. But I'm excited to be part of it and hitting the ground running, so.
So, yes, David, again, welcome aboard. We're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I just wanted to talk quickly about the Baker-Polito administration. I can say I'm excited about the opening of what are called community behavioral health centers. There's 25 of them located across the Commonwealth, and the city of Chickapi is fortunate to have one right here on Granby Road. So, the nonprofit who'll be running ours is called the Commune, the Center for Human Development. They call the Facility Gateway. It's located at 1109 Granby Road. Gateway will improve access to care by delivering 24/7, community-based, mobile crisis intervention in stabilization as an alternative to emergency room visits. So, anyone who may be involved in some type of mental health crisis, or, let's see, substance abuse, any issue like that, can now take advantage of a free clinic. If you have insurance, they would take that into consideration, or even the hotline that is available. Like I said, they're located at 1109 Granby Road, and they opened today at noon. So, we're really excited to help serve our community. I know that the pandemic had certainly taken its toll on many people, and mental health crises are real, and here's an opportunity to provide services to people, again, at no cost, 24/7. The hotline number is 1-833-C-H-D-TALK, T-A-L-K. Again, 1-833-C-H-D-T-A-L-K. So, that facility is now open, and we're excited about how it can help our residents and, and those in Western Mass who may be struggling with mental health crises. So, I wanted to share that with you. And lastly, I wanted to give you a quick update that the MSBA has chosen Chickapi as one of the 10. Berry Schools was a school with significant functional obsolescence, with a gymnasium that's either on the third, or fourth, or fifth floor, with no elevator, and many different tier levels, single plane glass, and many other issues like, I was going to say PCBs, but it's not. It's asbestos. It's, it's laden with asbestos issues with the windows, ceilings, and many other parts of the building. It's certainly one of the worst elementary schools in the Commonwealth, and it was designated and chosen to move forward, and I wanted to share that with you. We will go, be going through this process now. We're entering into the eligibility period, so that right now, there's no commitment, but reimbursement is up to 80% of whatever the cost of the school will be. We're immediately looking at legal issues in regard to Garrity Grove as a potential site. We're going to explore, again, population trends, many other things before decisions are made, but I just wanted to let you know that we've been accepted into the MSBA program. We're really excited about it, and this is just the beginning of the process. So, sure, Mary Beth.
I want to thank you, Mayor, for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
This is something that the school committee has been discussing, I think, under Superintendent Regi since 2015, and I'm glad your administration is very proactive and supportive of building a new Annaberry School. So, the public, I'm sure, is very excited. This is great news for the school department and school committee and the city as a whole, and thanks for your hard work.
Thank you. I can tell you, one image resonates with me. When the MSBA was here, there was a student who had a cast on his leg and had to be actually ruled outside the building, brought down through the parking lot into the STEM lab, which is located in what used to be a garage for the school and that space. So, there was no access down the stairs, other than someone actually carrying this student. So, it's exciting to know. Just please understand, it is going to take some time, and again, there's no commitment yet, but we're moving forward and really excited about the opportunity. Things will really start kicking off in April. Joel McCall.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your work on that. I know it's, it's a big lift for you and your team, and inching towards building the first elementary school in the city of Chickapi in a long, long time. So, appreciate the work you've done. Just a question from me about whether or not we continue to have the ability to consider about consolidating schools, given the, the decline in enrollment, but also a new building that, if we contributed a little bit more, be able to house more students?
Great question, and we are going to explore that as well. So, there's going to be talk about the possibility of combining schools, and again, we're going to explore everything before we actually decide on exactly what we're going to build. So, that's definitely taken into consideration. Thank you. Sure, Gary LeBree.
I'm, I'm very happy that we are going to get a new school in Ward 8. The number, the neighbors are a little anxious, because they don't know exactly where it's going, and I tell them, you know, it'll be a few years out, you know, before somebody walks into that door. But I'm thinking a couple of years before we even decide where on Garrity Grove, and if on Garrity Grove that we can put it.
It's, it's no secret, Gary, that these take a long time, and I would say for this school to finally get a ribbon cutting, we're talking about five to seven years from today. So, it is going to be quite a process. We're going to follow it. We've been assigned a coordinator through the MSBA to help us through the process, and we're excited to go through the eligibility period.
Right. Thank you.
So, I don't have an answer to that, but one thing we have to check is the legalities behind using parts of Garrity Grove as a, as the site for the potential new school, or are we going to renovate the school? That could be a consideration as well. So, those things haven't been determined yet, but we're very excited about exploring them. I saw another hand, I thought. Oh, bye-bye. Vice President Zigorowski, you're all set.
Well, that's all I had for you, and again, I thank you for your consideration to the mayor's orders. I think those are three really important topics that I wanted to share with you, and I wish us all a wonderful, hopefully, healthy, prosperous 2023, and thank you for your consideration. Have a great meeting, city councilors, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll take a three-minute recess. I would like to call to order the January 3, 2023 city council meeting to order. Please rise to the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, we'll take a moment of silence for those that protect us home and abroad. Thank you. All right. Participating tonight for the city council is Shane Brooks on Zoom. Participating tonight for the city council is Shane Brooks on Zoom, Counsel Tilletson on Zoom, and Counsel Lopez on Zoom. Clerk, can you call the roll?
President Laflambeau.
Here.
Roy.
Here.
Tilletson.
Here.
Zegorowski.
Here.
McCullough.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Valkir.
Here.
Crampits.
Here.
Dobus.
Here.
Kuchain.
Here.
Labrie.
Here.
Pinia Costello.
Here.
Thirteen yes.
Thank you. In compliance with the open meeting law, the city of Chickapi is broadcasting live and for future broadcasting this meeting on Chickapi TV. Is anyone else in the audience video or auto-taping this meeting? Please state your name and reason for doing so. Seeing none, we will move into public input. Public input is limited to three minutes or less. There will be no discussion of collective bargaining or personal attack. Is anyone else in the audience for public input? Anybody for public input on Zoom? Seeing none, we'll go back into, take a motion, go back to regular order of business. Motion made in second that we go into regular order of business. Roll call, please.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes. Okay, do we have any communications, City Clerk?
No communications.
Seeing no communications, any minutes?
December 6.
Counsel McCullough.
A motion that we take the minutes of December 6 and approve them this evening.
Motion made in second that we accept the minutes of December 6, 2022. On the motion.
Self-explanatory.
Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes. Mayor's orders.
Order that the city council accept the FY 2023 firefighter safety equipment grant in the amount of $19,308.95 from the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security and the Department of Fire Services to the Chickapi Fire Department. Said grant is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
Counsel Brooks.
Motion made in second that the mayor's order be accepted this evening and passed through all stages on the recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor and approved this evening. On the motion.
This will help us get through some of the recent challenges and provide much-needed services for the citizens of Chickapi.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
Order that the sum of $19,308.95 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, fire special account for purchase of equipment. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the stabilization fund.
Counsel Lopez.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
On the motion, this order goes with Mayor's Order 1. This is an appropriation for equipment for our fire department. We heard from Chief Stamborsky today, and I am in support of this. This will help us with completing the equipment for some Jaws of Life that we need for our stations.
Thank you. Any comments on the floor? Any comments on Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
Order that the sum of $16,500 be hereby appropriate to the following named account, fire special account for purchase of ambulances. Said amounts be taken from the available funds in the fire salary account for firefighter second year.
Counsel Kuchain.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on the written recommendation of the mayor.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please.
This is for equipment for the ambulance that's going to be coming in in a few weeks. Typically, we would trade an ambulance in and take the smaller items out and put them into the new one, but this is actually going to be an additional ambulance to the complement, so now we'll have five. So things like an AED, first-in bag, oxygen bag, a lot of the little stuff will have to be purchased right for this.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor, Counsel Costello?
I'd like to thank Chief Stamborsky for keeping our ambulances in good condition and also increasing them to five ambulances. It's great for public safety. Thank you, Chief Stamborsky.
Yeah, I just, if I may, I won't because it's not worth the roll call. Any other comments from the floor? Counsel Dobus.
I also want to thank the chief as well. I think this would be really good for public safety, so I appreciate his efforts. Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
Be it ordered by the city council or approved by the mayor that under the authority granted them by Chapter 269 of the Acts of 2022, the Chickapi retirement system increases the cost of living adjustment for fiscal year 2023 to 5% on the base amount specified pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 32, Section 103. Said increase will take effect July 1, 2022.
Counsel Zegorowski. Motion made in second that the mayor's order be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor. On the motion, please. Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counsel Costello.
Thanks, Jim. I'm going to support this wholeheartedly. It's a step in the right direction for one year to increase the retirement based on inflation rates. This is a good solution or the start of a solution to address the needs that our people on low, excuse me, fixed income. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Jim.
The cities have gone to 3% or higher, so I think what we're doing is the right thing for our retirees.
Thank you. Any other comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
Order that the city council accept the in-kind donation of a Christmas tree with a value of $399.99 from the Chickapi BJ's Wholesale Club to the city of Chickapi. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and One Half.
Counsel Valkir.
Motion that the mayor's order be received, passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor, and the in-kind donation be accepted this evening.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor and accepted this evening. On the motion.
On the motion, as part of our Christmas tree lighting ceremony, the city received an in-kind donation from BJ's Wholesale Club in the form of a Christmas tree valued at $399.99, and it's on display here, and it looks really terrific.
This leg nerve aching.
It's really, I would just like to have a letter of thanks sent to BJ's on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
Order that the city council accept the in-kind donation of a Christmas tree with a value of $249 from the Chickapi Home Depot to the city of Chickapi. Said donation is accepted in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and One Half.
Counsel Tilletson.
Motion that the mayor's order be received and the Christmas tree accepted.
Donation.
As a donation, and it will make it more, make our Christmas time at that area in front of City Hall much more pretty, so I'm thrilled to see it. It's free, you know, I mean, why not? It'll look beautiful. Our rural area there again with another tree like that, or two trees, yeah.
Okay, Jim, I'm going to motion it first. Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor and the acceptance of the 249 for the Christmas tree be accepted this evening. If you want to continue, Jim, go ahead.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson. Counselor Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
We have the appointment of Nathan Morrow as a member of the planning board. New appointment.
Counsel Labrie.
Make a motion that Nathan Morrow's order be approved and sent to the Human Resources Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor and the new appointment be sent to Human Resources for a public hearing. On the motion.
On the motion, Nathan Morrow has worked for the planning board for a number of years. He left for another job on good terms. Normally, you know, in the past, we would have not sent him to Human Resources, but our new policy is let everybody get a chance to meet him and come in and ask questions, so that's why we're going to send him to Human Resources for a hearing.
Thank you. Counsel McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say Nathan is, was one of the most dedicated municipal employees that I've had the pleasure to work with in a number of different roles. He gave his entire heart to the city during the time he was employed here and eventually moved on to another opportunity, but that has not prevented him from showing deep appreciation and gratitude to the city of Chickapi and a commitment to it. And so for willing to come in on a volunteer basis to a board that he knows a whole lot about and a board that, quite frankly, has been treated relatively unfairly by this body over the last few years is a testament to his character, and I'm very grateful that he's stepping up to the plate. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Counsel Costello.
Thanks. I just want to say that Nathan Morrow did a great job on the charter commission, and I heard that from my husband, so I think that's a good reference. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Counsel Valkir.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Now, I just want to dovetail my fellow councilor's comments. Nathan was an associate planner with the city of Chickapi. He's very experienced, and he definitely will be an asset to the planning board, so we really need to put him on the board, and he's going to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Seeing none, roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
We have a new appointment of Jay Paul as a member of the planning board.
Counsel Roy.
Yeah, motion that the mayor's order be received and the appointment sent to the Human Resource Board.
Motion made in second that the motion be received and passed through all stages on a written recommendation of the mayor and the new appointments be sent to Human Resources for a public hearing. On the motion.
On the motion, I don't know Mr. Paul, but we'll take it up in committee.
Thank you. Okay, any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegorowski.
Yes.
McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkir.
Yes.
Crampits.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Pinia Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes. On the next one, item number nine, education, I'm going to step out of the room for this one. one. It has to do with education and involving the Mass. Mutual Financial Group, which I work for, so I'm going to turn it over to Counsel Vice President Zegarowski for this one.
We have a favorable report from the Education Committee, be it ordered that the school committee's request that the city of Chicopee purchase the real property located at 350 Memorial Drive for school purposes be sent to the Finance Committee and the Education Committee separately for discussion.
I think I should send this to Mary Beth.
Okay, motion that the Education Committee report be received and placed on file.
On the motion, seconded, a motion made in seconded that the motion be received and placed on file. On the motion.
Yes, on December 22, 2022, the Education Committee met with the school committee and some school committee officials in regards to what the education plans are going to be for the property if it is purchased on 350 Memorial Drive, the Mass. Mutual Conference Center. We learned that there are different programs that the school department is looking at, including moving students from the Fairview School that are 18 to 22 years old and move it to this particular building. They're looking at homeless storage closets so that people that are homeless can pick up clothes. They're looking at conference and training centers, training paraprofessionals, and to host other conferences for educational commitments and, and services throughout, throughout the area. So basically, they have a plan in place in regards to educational programs for the use of this building.
Anybody on Zoom? Any other comments? See you in house, please call a roll. President Laflambeau. Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
McAuliffe.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Twelve yes, one out of chair. Motion passes. Be it ordained by the City Council that the code of the city of Chicopee for the year 1991 is amended, be hereby further amended as follows: Delete Section 275-41 Home Occupation; Insert Section 188-22 Home Occupation License.
Counsel Tilletson.
Motion that we refer to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing.
Motion made that the order be received, take its first reading, and refer to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing. On the motion.
On the motion, we'll take it up in committee.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
McAuliffe.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.
Dobus.
Yes.
Kuchain.
Yes.
Labrie.
Yes.
Piniac Costello.
Yes.
Thirteen yes.
And the motion passes.
Be it ordained by the City Council that the code of the city of Chicopee for the year 1991 is amended, be hereby further amended as follows: Chapter 275-9, add to the end of Section 275-9F.
Counsel Tilletson.
Same course.
Motion that the order be received, take its first reading, and refer to the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing. On the motion, Jim.
On the motion, though, we'll take it up in committee.
Thank you. Any comments from the floor? Any comments from Zoom? Roll call.
President Laflambeau.
Yes.
Roy.
Yes.
Tilletson.
Yes.
Zegarowski.
Yes.
McAuliffe.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
Valkier.
Yes.
Crumpets.
Yes.[1222.67]